This is a selectmen's meeting for June 3rd, 2010. First order of business, salute to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in this one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of last meeting.
I make a motion we approve the minutes of the last meeting is written.
Second.
All in favor. Signing of the warrants. We don't have approval of agenda on here.
Oh.
Really like that.
Skipped right off.
That's the first mistake.
Better than.
Well, editor.
That's the first mistake I've seen since I've been a selectman. Apparently Debbie has a good sense of humor today. And her husband.
One of the things that happened today was the pole went off and I may have been working on the agenda because the television, the computer was shut down.
Yeah. We never got UPS for yours?
Huh?
We never got one of those backup, battery backups for your computer?
Well, it came back on, but it shut off. No, it didn't come back on. It turned it back on.
Oh, so we didn't get a battery backup for yours?
Apparently not.
Alright.
Okay, we're adding in approval of agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda, uh, with the approval of the agenda on there.
Second.
All in favor. Okay.
Does it make any sense?
There is no old business going on to new business. Awarding of the audit bid. We have two bids in for the audit. And, um, we've done some research on this and Sherri Smith has done some research and we'd like to report on what she has found out. Okay.
To the town of Acton Selectmen, at your request, I have done some research on the two firms that have sent in proposals for the town of Acton audit. The following outlines the system I used and the results. I called two of the towns from each auditor and asked the same questions of each. Number one, the software used. Two, if they were satisfied. Three, if the audit was done in a timely fashion and if they had occasion need non-audit accounting assistance. The results are as follows. For Mr. Mowry, I called Quinsham and Lymington. They have Trio and NDS respectively. They both were satisfied. The audit was done in a timely fashion for both and neither of them had occasion to need non-audit accounting assistance. For RHR Smith, I called Limerick and Wiscasset. They both had Trio. They were both satisfied. The audit was done in a timely fashion for both and Limerick said they were very helpful with non-audit accounting assistance and Wiscasset said, yes, they had used them for that due to their turnover and fraud investigation that they had had in their town. Regarding Mr. Mowry, it should be noted that both of the towns I spoke to regarding Mr. Mowry stated that they were not doing all of their accounting functions through Trio or NDS respectively. They were both doing things the old way and I have this in quotes because that was exactly what they said to me. Also, Mr. Mowry was able to give the towns adjusting entries to perform, but could not actually do them himself in the system. As Mr. Mowry's bid consisted of only a letter, a certificate, and a letter from a peer review group, I also addressed him with the missing items from his proposal. Number one, no description of firm. His quote was, "I'm self-employed and I do the work myself." Number two, he answered, um, it was some basic guidelines that have to be done through an audit, on an audit, and he said, "I agree." And that was all he had said. Number three, no description of the audit procedures. He believed this to be boilerplate information and that it was just understood the way an audit was done. Number five was no statement of demonstrated ability to thoroughly explain reasoning behind requesting or suggesting changes to be made. He said he would send an audit report via mail from another town, which he did. Number six, listing of all municipalities for whom you audited the prior fiscal year. He only has four municipalities and he bid on, his quote was, "I bid on this because it was an off-tax season audit." Mr. Mowry stated he understands how municipal accounting softwares work, but does not know how to do the actual entries in Trio or NDS. I did verify with him to be sure he understood he was doing the school and the town audits for the price he quoted and that we are not part of an RSU or SAD and he stated that he understood. Limerick also mentioned that they had been using Mr. Mowry for their audit and changed to RHR Smith with whom they were now very happy with. The reasons for the change cited were, and these are all quotes from one of the Limerick selectmen, this is nothing that I made up, it was quotes from a Limerick selectmen. Inability to adapt to Trio system. Many reports were submitted on green bar paper. Unable to assist with necessary restructuring of accounts. Unable to explain why a trial balance was out of balance. Did not understand the need for separate funds for certain things. They only saw him one, for one hour during the audit and he did not meet with the selectmen to discuss issues or questions they had, they had. He created the audit off information the town treasurer gave him without going further to verify. Regarding RHR Smith, Mr. Smith answered all of the requested criteria in their proposal. I did not need to ask for elaboration. Of the four towns that Mr. Mowry performs municipal audits on, auditors at RHR Smith actually complete the school portion as their part of school administration districts. Limerick stated that they had left Mowry for RHR Smith for the above cited reasons and were very happy with the staff and results of RHR Smith. Wiscasset also stated, "We have used RHR Smith for a very long time and have just finished the bid process." RHR Smith was the low bidder. I contacted the town of Wells as well and because they use munis, I did not include them in the above table, but however, they stated, "We have been using RHR Smith for six or seven years and have been happy with them. We are currently in the bidding process only because we haven't been out to bid in that timeframe." Why? And feel it is due process for the town." And that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open up for discussion.
When I read the email from Sherri, I thought it was rather self, I thought it was evident to me that RHR Smith was the solid choice for the town to remain with. Just Mr. Mowry not having information about how to use Trio, which is what the municipal side of government uses, and NDS, which is what the school uses, it makes him really an unacceptable choice for our town.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree too. So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the three-year contract with RHR Smith.
I will second.
All in favor. Done. Do we have a contract that we have to sign? No.
Yeah, Sherri, do you have the contract?
Um, I can give you a citation of letter.
Would you please? So we can sign that? And we can move on while we wait for that?
I think Mr. Lopez has something to say.
Oh, sure. Did you want to speak now?
Uh, about the subject matter that you have in hand, yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
I guess for some of us that have not been able to keep up with the cable committee or the cable cast that you guys put out, and to refresh my memory, I would like to know what the two bids were. I understand and I agree with Larissa's analysis of the one company, but I would like to be refreshed as far as what the dollar amount of those bids are.
One was ten thousand, sorry, Smith, and the other gentleman was six thousand.
And, but, RHR Smith's bid was fifteen hundred for an individual audit and Mr. Mowry's was twenty-five hundred for an individual audit, so it was higher. And the, Mr., uh, RHR Smith's bid was to not exceed ten thousand.
Right.
It was not that it was going to be ten thousand, but there was a guarantee that it would not exceed that.
Okay, and who was the other person? R, R, RHR Smith and?
Mowry, M-O-W-R-Y, I believe.
Thank you.
That contract with RHR Smith was priced for three years, right? Also.
Any further discussion on the audit? Okay, going on to appointing of ballot clerks. We have a bunch of, okay.
I believe that the actual letter came with it in the sealed bid, but I didn't get that portion.
Okay. We can sign it tomorrow.
We can sign it in the morning.
Sign it up in the morning. Thank you. Okay, we have, um, appointment of ballot clerks that we have to get done, so I'll read off who we have to appoint. Jennifer Rue as election warden, Carl Litchfield as election deputy warden, Margaret Anthony as election deputy warden, and the following, uh, for ballot clerks. Carl Litchfield, Margaret Anthony, Robert Anthony, Maureen Dardrell, Pam McGlyndon, Charles Heffernan, Anita Butrick, Marita Lowell, Estelle Gore, Richard Hamm, Patricia Muchacho, Dawn Van Cinderen, Richard Grokey, Susan Razik, William Lotz, Tina Gagnon, Jane Archibald, Alan Peterson, Marion Elliott, Clarence Langley, Ann German, Nancy Deans, William Deans, Virginia DeBola, Michael Conway, Sheila Conway, Walter Scott, Robert Anderson, Monica Marino, Sherri Smith, and Robert Gore for ballot clerks.
I make a motion we sign the, um, appointments brought forth by the town clerk.
Second.
All in favor. Okay, we have to sign each one of these.
I believe these are for two years.
Yeah, two, 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 yeah.
Right?
Yeah, two thousand and twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have the county tax bill. We have a letter from the county of York about the annual tax bill. Encloses your annual assessment for York County taxes. We're sending your tax bill early again this year in hopes that your community can help the county save on borrowing costs by partially or fully paying your county tax early. As you know, and as you are no doubt aware, because of the county's fiscal year situation, it is necessary for the county to borrow all of its operating capital for the first nine months of each year. Any early payment of taxes lessens the county's need to borrow as much, saving interest costs, which of course ultimately are passed on to the cities and towns. Your early payment of part or all of your county taxes is greatly appreciated by the county commissioners and county officials. We sincerely thank you, Richard B. Brown, York County Manager. So this is for three hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and three dollars and ninety-one cents, um, which normally is due the first day of September, two thousand and ten, and it is not delinquent until October thirty-first, two thousand and ten. So they're asking us to pay this now.
I would make a motion that we plan on paying it as of October sixteenth, two thousand and ten, and that we also make a commitment to follow closely the county charter process to make sure that the fiscal year situation is straightened out.
Oh, it's the last time you motion?
I guess it's not a motion. We'll do one thing at a time.
Alright.
The fiscal year thing is, it's very frustrating. It doesn't make any sense for it to continue on this way. We know it's a problem and I'm hoping that the county charter will address this.
Well, I'll make the motion then, I guess, so we don't have a motion yet, right?
We do, I just confused it.
That we pay by October sixteenth.
I, I guess, I would ask to amend that motion, Larissa, to give us the leeway, uh, maybe, you know, that pay might be, uh, October nineteenth or twenty-first or whatever, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Whatever the, by Friday payday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so we'll send it out the last week of pay period in October.
Last payday.
Sure. Second.
All in favor. Okay. Done.
The reason being for the, anyone who, is just because our taxes are due October fifteenth, so we will actually have the money with which to pay the bill come October fifteenth.
We don't have to borrow any money.
Exactly.
Okay, Mr. Wincho would like to speak.
I'm just giving my annual update on what we've done in the last month or so. We've graded all of my dirt roads. Got all my dirt roads graded. We had an issue over on County Road a couple weeks, well, yeah, a couple weeks ago there. Culverts gave out from underneath there, we had a couple holes in the road we had to fix, it was kind of a big deal. Got that done. Those will be being paved in hopefully tomorrow night if anybody obviously travels that road and hits the bumps. We keep putting bump signs up, but they keep getting taken down, so, um, so we replaced them. We just, uh, finished up one of my FEMA projects up on Young's Ridge. We laid about three hundred feet of riprap, changed some culverts, stabilized the hill. We got some hot top going on up there possibly tomorrow. And, um, that's it. Oh, and we just, uh, we just cleaned up the town shed, we swept it out. We got some issues with hot top we were talking earlier about and, um, I'm gonna talk to Scott eventually here about, um, what we're gonna do to fix that problem, so.
Well, we can, we can discuss that right now, if Scott's willing.
Um, Scott's probably aware of it, uh, we have a, a big hole at the entrance there and, um, this spring there, when the frost came out, it, it got pretty muddy and, um, about a week and a half ago, I went in there with my dump truck to turn around and I hit that hole and it reminded me that it had to be fixed, so I sent my guy down, had him sweep the area and clean up the yard and it was a little mess. And what my, what I propose is digging up the area where that is, 'cause I guess it's been a problem for quite a while. Talking to my father back when he was road commissioner, I guess that would be a trouble spot now and then. So, um, we've got some money in the account that we haven't touched, we got quite a bit of money in that account. So what I propose doing is digging that area up, repaving the entrance, and I think we'll still have enough money to, um, put a gate up, a true gate. The, uh, the pole with no trespassing sign fell over the other day, was rotted off, so at some point it'd be nice to, uh, put some sort of gate up so we can keep people from going in there and blowing donuts and getting into the shed and dumping stuff they probably shouldn't be dumping into the piles that we've got down there. So, um, we've got the money and the budget to do it, I just, uh, figured I'd mention it.
Would your thoughts be, I know we used to have a cable across there, right Scott? Would your thoughts be to put up a decent metal gate and, uh, say something like, uh, up at, uh, King's Old Pit, you know, one of the ones that you just swing open and stuff that's pretty much burglar proof, not burglar proof, but they can still rip them down, but keep the honest crooks out anyway?
Yeah, I mean, last, last year in that pile, I mean, it was tires and stuff like that and I, I'm pretty sure the road commissioners didn't dump that stuff in there.
Right.
Private people dumping in there and we can't have that stuff. It's a liability overall.
You find more of a problem in the, in the good weather than in the winter?
In the wintertime, we really can't shut, you can't shut the place up. In the middle of the night, when we roll through, we can't be getting worried about who's got a key to get in. It's pretty much right now when there's nobody around. In the wintertime, there's usually someone in and out of there, getting sand, whatever. It's kind of monitored. Right now, there's absolutely nobody monitoring that place, so it'd be nice to keep the people out.
But you don't get much debris in the wintertime?
Yeah, in the wintertime, we don't get much people cleaning out their, their basements and whatever. So, um, I just, I think right now it's a liability. We're gonna end up one day coming down there and finding a whole truckload of stuff from someone's yard that they couldn't take to the dump. And, um, it's pretty appetizing seeing a big pile of stuff there as it is. So, um, we've got the, we've got over twelve thousand dollars right now in the account and, uh, right now I'm just trying to get some, um, prices on some hot top that at least pave the entrance, 'cause after, after we swept it off, it, it's taking it hard and at least through the, from the entrance to where the gate would be where it is now. Beyond that, I wouldn't find it making a whole lot of sense paving anything in there because, well, we kind of run loaders and everything else over, so it's probably not a good idea, but just at the main entrance coming in and out of the road, um, I think, you know, needs a lot of attention.
You guys think that would be just as well off with a gate? Get a hold of somebody like Stone or somebody like that to come up and do it, or something that you guys would think you'd be better off to do it yourselves, or?
I, I figured I'd call, um, Stone or?
Whoever, I'm just?
Who's that Godreal guy you used over there? Mainline.
Mainline.
Someone like that there, get a couple numbers and see what we own. We've, we've still got, well, not quite a month now, but, uh, at least get some numbers and see if, um, we can get something rolling. I've got a couple of the people giving me some numbers on hot top. I figure we might as well utilize that money. If we've got it there, it was, we've got some issues down there we ought to fix and we've got the money, we might as well do it now.
I know we've been talking about getting this off, seems like forever.
So do you guys want to get together and talk about that this week because that's, I mean, that's your guys' gig?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. We have announcements. We could open up to the floor if anybody has anything from the floor.
Ray Lopez, uh, I have a couple questions, if memory serves me correctly. I think one of the things, first, let me start with, uh, the open forum last night at the school, I thought was a very positive meeting between the public and the school district and, uh, the information that was passed out was very informative. If memory serves me correctly though, when I was chairing the cable committee, there had been some funds that had been allocated, or I don't know if the funds had been allocated, but that at some point in time, we wanted the school to have the same capability of broadcasting their meetings. And I'm wondering what, what has happened of that? Have, has anyone on the administrative side over here in town made the offer to the school that they're able to set this type of situation up so that the public can be informed and what's, what's going on with that?
Pretty much since it started, I guess, wouldn't you say, with some done?
Who was informed by my inquiry?
Superintendent, the school committee, the principal, uh, several times.
Was this inform, a word of mouth type of informative, or was this in actual documentation?
It was done at these meetings and it was done at school committee meetings. It was done over the phone and I believe, uh, you'd have to ask Carol, but I believe there was some emails also sent out.
Okay. And, and where do we see ourselves as far as that progress of, um, maybe you guys don't know of when the school would be able to, to kind of look more into this, to get the public informed from that side of what's going on with the town budget?
Well, I would think that, uh, was it town budget or the school budget?
Well, actually, they're both running consecutively.
I understand.
We have to make a decision, you know? I mean, I, I understand yesterday someone had made a comment, uh, as far as, you know, five million versus one point seven million respectively.
Yeah.
Okay? And, uh, we as the public actually have to look at both sets. I mean, we step back and look at all the figures of what we're asking, asking about. But I think that the one sector here is fact that, uh, I don't believe that the school, the meetings from the school committee, are those still being gone and taped and televised?
School committee meetings, yeah.
And that's going on on a continual basis as far as the school committee?
I don't know, I'm not gonna say, I couldn't tell you the dates of every meeting that's been televised, but, uh, there's been somebody there.
Carol.
Can I answer some of your questions?
Hi, Carol.
Um, school committee meetings are being taped, um, and, and televised. And I've made pleas, I think, at every meeting, um, for camera people. And that, the reason that last night didn't get filmed is 'cause I didn't have a camera person to film it. Okay? So, we just need camera people to film the meetings and then, you know, they could get...
But the committee is aware that they're able to be up to par as far as the same way as the town?
Are you talking about them having their own studio?
Correct.
I don't think that, um, we have gotten to that point yet to have them set up their own studio at the school. I don't think that we've made enough progress. I think that's kind of like jumping ahead, you know? You would have to, number one, I mean, you'd have to have the money to set up the equipment in the studio. You have to purchase, I mean, you've got, what, thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of equipment?
Right.
That you would have to supply them with and somebody would have to run it. I mean, the school isn't staffed for somebody to run a TV channel.
I guess, uh, has, has that presentation been made to the committee itself as far as them having the ability to go that route?
Can I, I can say a little bit of the history on that. When we started the negotiations, which was in two thousand and four, and, um, I negotiated for about three years until I stopped being a selectman for a year. At that point, I had negotiated a separate, and I had had a meeting with Brian Beeler at the time, the superintendent, and he was very interested in having a lab set up at the school. So we had, I had in there negotiated the setup for the town hall and the setup for the school. To have their own equipment, for the kids to get involved, to have a program for them to be able to film everything there. But sometime in that year from when it, you know, when it was, the negotiation was finished, they really took, Metro Cast took a very high stand on it and that got negotiated out. So we ended up with just one camera and one setup. Now, part of the, so that's, that's what happened there, was we had every intention to have the school have their own nice setup there for the kids to learn from and a teacher to be part of it. Then, um, part of the discussions with the cable committee many times when we were at meetings is that we would like to purchase an additional camera at some point, which could be used for the school absolutely, and, um, have them be able to get involved and have their own camera.
And the other thing is, I, I'm not sure if you were still on the cable committee at the time when we did like the five-year development plan, I believe you were. And that's one of the things that's a long-term goal, is for us to get the school, we have two channels, you know, that we could possibly use, twenty-five and twenty-six. And one of our long-term goals is to, I mean, this, this studio still has a lot of work to do before it's completely set up. I mean, it's still, you know, probably fifty percent, you know? And, but that was on our, our five-year development plan. That's one of our goals, is to get the school on that channel twenty-five.
And I commend not only the, the selectmen on the previous, on, not only the previous, but the current administration here for having the foresight to put this into play, but I think that the people of Acton are only getting half of the story at this point in time because we're all, I mean, yeah, we're, the cable committee is in lack for people to do any tele, tele, televising the meetings.
Ray, if I may, there's, there was two events recently at the school, uh, and Carol can speak a lot clearer on this, I know Larissa was part of it, uh, that was set up, uh, Mike Corey had said, I don't remember if it was at a school committee meeting or a selectmen's meeting or what it was, that they had cameras down there, uh, two cameras that could be used to tape things, uh, at the school, so we put on the television station up here.
Can I explain it?
Okay.
They have, they're, they have cameras that aren't, uh, you know, the quality of our cameras, but they take the same tapes. And Mike Corey and I had discussed, um, nights that our camera was being used, them filming with those cameras and then just providing them with the tapes and then I could put it on, you know, I could put it through the regular. It might be a little bit poorer quality than, you know, what comes out of our camera, but it, it probably wouldn't be, you know, until we try it once, we don't know.
Right.
Um, so there were two events that we had set up. I had set, got somebody to go down and film with the school's camera because this camera was being used here. And then it was just a big miscommunication and since then, Tricia Halliday and I have spoken and we've really ironed it out as to who the point person is to, 'cause what happened was the girl got there and, um, nobody knew where the camera was. You know, it was just, it was just, it was poor communication.
As far as their equipment?
Yes, as far as their equipment. And we did look at buying a second camera right now, but if you look at the number of occasions where you could use two cameras, I mean, we've probably only had three occasions where it's been a problem. It doesn't warrant spending ten thousand dollars on another camera. We don't have camera people. Once we have former people, some more volunteers, then it would be warranted, but I can't get, sometimes I can't even get one person to use one camera. So it is too bad, it's unfortunate that the people aren't only getting half of the story, but until we have more volunteers for the camera, that's the way it's probably going to be.
Has the cable committee extended the hand to the school district as far as everything that has been set up, as far as the policies and procedures?
I welcome you to come in and look at the correspondence back and forth. We've been working together since last July. Um, I've dealt with Linda, Judy, Mrs. Halliday, I mean, we have had very open communication back and forth, trying to make arrangements. When you look at the fact that this, this is, studio hasn't been up and running for a full year yet, I mean, it takes time to, it's a big project. And I think you of all people know that. So, um, but we are working together, we're working well together and we're, we're getting to that point, but it just takes time. And the more volunteers that we have, the more quickly we can progress.
There was two school people, Ray, I don't know if it was a couple months ago maybe, Mary Stanton and, and Tracy Scully. There was two school people, Ray, I remember it was a couple of months ago maybe, uh, Mary Stanton and, and Tracy Scully, uh, that said they would be interesting volunteers, uh, to work with the studio and filming and stuff. And they came up and they met with Scott Dunham Saturday on that, very Saturday morning. And, uh, they said they weren't interested in doing it right now, uh, maybe at a later date. And those are the only, you know, like, you know, it's hard, it's hard to get people.
Okay.
Maybe you should refresh your skills, your camera skills, Ray, because you were there last night. You could have filmed it and observed it at the same time.
That's a Ray Lopez statement, I like that.
She's got you there, Ray. Thank you, Carol. Uh, there were two, there were two statements that were made last night at, uh, at that meeting. And I, I believe personally it was a very productive meeting. Uh, there was no question that was, uh, not answered to the best of their ability. Uh, two things, uh, that really concerned me and as a newcomer to this town and, and I've, and I've heard the complaints not only from the selectmen, but also from the school committee of attendance, uh, as far as coming to the meetings. Um, the issue that came up on that situation was, uh, was the word verbiage was used as far as animosity. Okay? Um, there is animosity and there's, there always will be a ten percentile of people that will buck any system that you have. But I think we've reached a point in time, uh, for the citizens of Acton, not only the ones that have been here for a lifetime, but the new ones that are coming in, that whatever animosity exists between the school and ti, and the town should be put aside. And we should start working together, you know, to inform the people. The, well, the, the animosity, like as I said before, there, there's always that sector of us and them. Okay? And, and it seems to be that they're continuously bu, bumping heads. All right? And regardless of, of what motives there are behind it, whether they're personal or political, I think that that just hurts the town of Acton in general.
There's always, I mean, two sides, Ray, that's what democracy's all about.
I understand it, there's always two sides and, but from those two sides, you always have to decipher the truth.
Oh, yes.
Or even more likely ten sides.
Yeah, I mean, that only comes from the ten percent that is always there, no matter what group you have, as far as that type. But there are some people that, that kinda start to fuel some of that animosity. And I made a statement to one of the committee members from the school yesterday about that particular situation. And, um, I told him, I said, you know, we have to stop with the animosity between this and that. Uh, another citizen brought up the point, that is why there is such poor attendance, not only to this meeting, but to the school meeting. Okay?
There's a good tendency here.
Out of two thousand something people that live in Acton, this is pretty poor attendance.
It used to be two or three.
I understand that, but, and then, uh, the other thing that I have, it, it was kind of a, a thorn in my side, Dennis actually has to deal with you.
Okay.
And that would be that, um, the school came to you and asked that a bulletin be posted on channel twenty-six about the upcoming meeting.
Yeah, that was Thursday night.
Right. And it wasn't done possibly until Saturday or Sunday, that that was put in.
It was Saturday, I think.
Okay. Why that delay? I mean, if everything was put through...
Well, it isn't, it isn't just to me, Ray, I make very clear that all three selectmen are here with the question.
Right, but if memory serves me correctly, being from the cable committee, only one selectman has to sign off on that particular item.
Right. And I'm, so what I'm saying is, I am no more innocent or guilty than any of these three selectmen. Than any of the three.
Well, the only reason I, I bring it to you, sir, is because it was brought to your attention.
It was brought to all three of our attention at the meeting.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that, it was only told that you should do.
On Saturday, it was brought to my attention. That I, that I didn't, that I hadn't, that I hadn't done it, or Jennifer who hadn't done it. And I also said, well, tell her, Judy, when Judy called, that I apologized. I forgot.
Right. And all that was brought out last night?
And Jennifer put it on the website and, uh, Carol wasn't here and Jennifer went out and put it on the TV.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm only one person, Ray.
Right. But I mean, you, do you see where that would turn off a lot of the populace as far as coming and voting? Because we talked about, you know, when you go to the school and they're voting in their budget, the majority of the people that are there, of course, are people that are associated with the school.
Well, that wasn't...
I believe this year's vote was fifty to six.
Yeah.
Okay?
I didn't, I went.
Well, I understand that. But, I mean, you have to get the word out as soon as possible, is, is all I'm saying.
Well, you're talking about negativity, Ray.
No, sir, I'm not, I'm just asking you a question.
You were asking about if I could do a better job in, in bringing everybody together.
Right.
This is basically what you were saying.
And that's not negativity, that's called accountability.
Okay, accountability. I, I will tell you this, to the best of my knowledge, I have done nothing but tried to work with the school.
I understand.
And nobody that works up here, and I'm gonna use for me liberally because I'm only one selectman, has not put one thing in the newspaper negative about anything about anybody at the school. Unlike employees at the school.
And I called about that last night.
Regardless, have done that towards the board of selectmen. So I, I can't see how anybody can perceive that the selectmen are doing anything to cause a negative impact on the school budget or the attendance of the school meetings.
No, I, I don't blame the selectmen for any of the attendance. I, I'm looking at information being put out there on a more timely manner so that the word will get out more to the public, you know?
Well, the school has mailed out, how many notices, Ray?
You know, it's, it's all about, way back in the beginning, Dennis, when you first ran, I told you and I told this board, and I believe Nancy Rumor was on this board, with me, it's all about accountability.
Yeah.
And if I am under the same token, I did not change one iota and was dealing with the selectmen or would I be dealing with the school board? It's all about accountability and I told them, I said, I don't mind putting money into a budget for, for the school, but I want every single dollar accounted for. I don't want, I want the minimal amount of waste that there can be.
Well, addressing me, like you said you were doing.
Right.
Where have I not been accountable?
Well, just in this last recent one was the fact that you were told on Thursday and you didn't get on till Friday or Saturday.
But like I said, that isn't just me, this, this is the board.
Okay, so the entire board was told on Thursday?
No, we were emailed about it days before that.
Okay.
So it was the entire, well, then I'm holding the entire board, I'm asking them?
I'm just saying, I'm not just the only one here, Ray.
Right, no, but I'm saying, you know, your name came up in particular, so that, that's what I had to do.
I'm sure it did.
And I didn't defend you, you know, even though you're my brother, I didn't.
I didn't, I don't expect you to.
So I'm just asking the board, please, you know, uh, do put out the messages as quickly as possible.
Normally do, Barry, this one was forgotten, right? This one was forgotten.
All right, thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, the only time your name was brought up last night was that I reported that you apologized. Because I got the message through Jennifer, it was Tuesday that I called and said, you know, it wasn't, why wasn't it on there? And when she called me back, she said Dennis apologized, Dennis said he apologizes. That's the only reason your name came up.
Well, I lose track of the days, I thought it was Saturday when I was here, but apparently it wasn't.
And, and the reason it came up at all was because people were mentioning last night that, you know, it was too bad that it wasn't better advertised and that it wasn't, um, that there weren't more people there.
And you know, Judy, that they say that about every meeting?
I know.
Whether it's a public hearing on some zoning thing, uh...
But I just wanted you to know that the only way your name came up last night was that I reported that you would apologize for it, that's all.
Again, this week, I said it last week. And, um, I wanna urge everybody, if you want something on the cable, please fill out the form. Or at the very least, I mean, I'm not doing it anymore without a form at all, but, um, people have a habit of emailing my personal email account that I don't have in front of me when I'm at the studio. So I might see it at home at eleven o'clock at night or whatever, but when I come in here the next morning and it's not in front of me on the computer and I have a thousand things in front of me, I'm not going to remember to do it. You have to fill out the forms, Jennifer's putting the forms on the website tomorrow. Um, they're available here at the town hall. I have to have that form filled out from now on. I was, you know, bending it a little and, um, letting people email the studio and use, you know, printing that off and using that. But there's been a lot of complaints about things not getting on, so I really have to buckle down and say, okay, if I don't have a form, it doesn't go on. And that'll cover me from now on.
And we can see about when she, Jennifer is putting them on the website, but maybe we can also see if there's a way for her to make that as a PDF file that could be emailed.
She is.
Oh, great.
I'd like to make clarification. I don't think anybody here should blame the board of selectmen. I think each and every one of us should blame ourselves for not being there at that forum last night. This letter was sent out to everybody, to my knowledge. It gave you the specifics on the budget, the forum that was being held. And I have to tell you that other than school board members and anybody representing the school, there were nine people in attendance for a five million dollar budget. You have no one to blame but yourselves. Don't blame this board of selectmen because it wasn't on television. Blame yourselves for not reading your mail. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Marion says she didn't get one of those letters, John said he got two, so maybe he got Marion's.
Uh, back a couple of meetings ago.
Quiet.
Okay.
It was brought up that... Back a couple of meetings ago, it was brought up that we had a lady in town that was offering to donate a hundred and ninety acres of land to the town. And I'd like to ask what the status is of that.
I haven't talked to the lady.
Were you gonna call her or something?
She called us that week. And, um, the status is that we have not heard back from her since that phone call?
And what happened with the phone call?
She called and asked, um, what happened next and how land, you know, that she said that she was told that it would have to go before town meeting and so forth. And I said, yes, that was true. And I asked her, what was the purpose of, you know, what was she hoping to have happen with her donation? And she said that she was donating the land to the town, or she needed to make a donation of the land in order to have the largest federal tax credit possible that she could receive. And how could the town help her to do that? And I said, well, honestly, the highest possible federal tax credit that you're going to receive will not come from the town, it would come from something like Three Rivers Land Trust instead.
So in essence, you tried to convince the lady?
No.
To give this land to someone other than the town?
I would disagree with that statement. A citizen, a taxpayer of our town called and asked how she could receive the highest federal tax credit for her land. And just as if any town taxpayer were to call me and ask for information that I had, I gave her that information.
Then you're, uh, you're an expert in taxation.
Actually, um, as far as tax credits for donations of land, I do have quite a bit of experience, yes.
Well, I, I cannot see how that could possibly have been acting in the best interest of the town of Acton. I can't possibly imagine. That piece of property is worth quite a lot of money. And I think that if a donor called and wants to give something to the town, I think it is disrespectful to the donor and disrespectful to the citizens of this community to lead them in a different direction.
I think that it is disrespectful of the donor to not offer them the full table of information. And at the same time that I let her know that, I also let her know the full process with the town, that we would, had already discussed it at length, that the town was excited to receive it and that she would be, please, talk to who she needed to, please consult with her own financial advisor and find out from them what would be in her best interest. And to please contact, contact the town back so that we could have this as a full conversation. That is my, I think, obligation, is to serve the people of the town. This is not the town's land, it is the land of this individual woman who is a single mother of three children and who is looking to make sure that it credits her as best financially as it can while still donating the land.
That wanted to give it to the town of Acton.
That wanted to make the highest federal...
Obviously felt that the town of Acton was worth giving a donation to.
And if she feels that way, then she will call us and she will do so, Mr. Hodgson.
On the same topic, if memory serves me correctly, was this land not offered in lieu of forgiveness of taxes?
No, I asked her that. I said, I'm under the impression that you would, you're looking to donate the land in lieu of taxes. She said, no, absolutely not, I have every full intention of paying the taxes in full.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I think, um, I would like to read something, which is, uh...
That is campaign literature.
No, it's not.
Absolutely not.
When I saw it on Dennis's desk the first time, I was told, don't worry, this has nothing to do with the town, this is just campaign stuff.
This list is accomplishments that the board of selectmen, including you, Larissa, have accomplished in the last year.
I was not asked to help make up this list in any way. And like I said, the first time I saw it, I was told that it was campaign stuff, not town.
I just thought we're, since we're...
I have not passed this out as any campaign thing, have you, Tony?
No.
All right.
I thought just that we're close to the end of the fiscal year, that we could do, say something positive.
Then let's say something positive at our last meeting of the fiscal year.
I don't know, I think it's a, it's a, uh... I think it's a, it's, it's, it's a fine line. This is not politics, this is background.
Then I would love to have some input into what was on that list. If it's something that we as a board should be proud of, then we as a board should have contribution to it.
I mean, if we should be proud, I'm very proud of everything we've done as a board.
It's all positive.
That's fine, that it can positively be addressed in a fully positive manner on the thirtieth.
Well, it's fine, Tony.
Okay.
Well, I wanna address one, let me, I wanna address one thing. Excuse me. Excuse me, I wanna address one, I'm gonna address one question that was asked, this is a fact, where it was, uh, said that the selectmen's voting is always two to one. Okay, and that's a factual question and I wanna give you the, the statistics of the selectmen's voting. That this board has had forty-eight selectmen's meetings. Okay, in forty-eight selectmen's meetings, one hundred and seventy-four votes were three to zero. One hundred and seventy-four votes were three to zero, okay? Six votes were two to one, with Larissa being the anti on that. Two votes were two to one with Dennis being the anti-vote on that. There's been one abstention on a vote by Dennis and one abstention on a vote by myself. So I just wanted, those are statistics that I wanted to bring out, okay? Hundred and seventy-four, three to zero votes, six, two to one votes, actually eight altogether, two to one votes. So if someone had asked about that, that's the statistic. I think it is.
I think it shows how, well, we really have worked together.
I think it is. Anything else from the floor? Okay. Contend a motion?
Uh, make a motion that, uh, we adjourn.
Second.
On the favor.